Welcome all, welcome to our formal session. I call it to order, and I'm privileged to introduce a great friend and significant part of our, you know, community Pastor Wadi Thoroughgood from New Jerusalem Church of God to give an invocation.
Let us bow our heads, kind and gracious Father, we come to you this evening. Father, first we thank you for grace and mercy. We thank you that for all we've been through, we are still standing and we're still Virginia Beach strong. Father, we pray now for our city officials and our leaders, our first responders. Look upon our mayor and our city council members. Father, lead them and guide them, strengthen them in this hour. Touch every bereaved family, those who are grieving the loss of their loved ones. Comfort them at this hour. Let them know that you're holding them in the palm of your hand and that you have them safe. Send the peace that passeth all understanding. Now, Father, continue to bless our great city. Strengthen us and guide us. Bind us together with courts that cannot be broken. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, can we roll call? Is everybody?
Mayor, everyone's present excluding Councilmember Moss and Wilson, who are both out of town.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
We have motion and a second. Could we have the voice call, please?
Who's second? Who was the second?
Who was the second? Mr. Tower.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
With Ms. Wilson and Mr. Moss being absent, the vote is nine to zero to certify the closed session and be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, I'm going to move for approval of the minutes of the informal and informal session of May 4, 2021, and the special session of May 11, 21. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
By a vote of nine to zero, approve the minutes submitted.
This is the last formal meeting before the anniversary of the darkest day in the history of Virginia Beach, two years ago, May 31. And I will read this proclamation. Whereas, two years ago, citizens of Virginia Beach experienced an unspeakable tragedy that resulted in the loss of Laquita C. Brown, Ryan Keith Cox, Tara Welsh Gallagher, Mary Louise, Mary Lou Gretzinger-Gill, Alexander Mikhail Gusov, Joshua O. Hardy, Michelle Missy Langer, Richard H. Nettleton, Catherine A. Lukish Nixon, Christopher Kelly Rapp, Herb Bert Snelling, Jr., and Robert Bobby Williams. Whereas five others were injured, four critically, and many more were seriously impacted, including people who worked in Building Two of Virginia Beach Municipal Center, family members, friends, city employees, people who rendered emergency medical aid, both on the scene and at area hospitals. Police who responded to the scene stopped the rampage and prevented further loss of lives, people who staffed the Emergency Operations Center and Family Assistance Center, city leaders, and elected officials to help guide the city's recovery efforts, and members of the Virginia Beach community and beyond who have demonstrated compassion and generosity through many acts of kindness. Whereas, in the aftermath of this tragedy in the community and beyond called on everyone to show love for VB, that phrase was adopted for use in a number of places across our city, homes, businesses, schools, parks, and beyond. And whereas, we still mourn the 12 lives lost so suddenly two years ago, and we pray for all those who were traumatized by this brutal act of violence and continue to seek healing. Whereas, we are forever changed, and we will never forget, we continue to pledge to commit to honoring those we lost through acts of service and acts of kindness. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and on behalf of this entire council, dare proclaim, May 31, 2021, Love for VB Dedication Day in Virginia Beach, and I call on all citizens to remember the victims of May 31, 2019 tragedy, and pledge to honor them through volunteer acts of service. I further order the flag of the City of Virginia Beach shall be flown at half-staff in the City Hall Building and City Grounds from May 28 through sunset on May 31. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Virginia Beach to be affixed on this 21st day of May, 2021. Thank you, and be assured, we will remember all of those affected in perpetuity. I thank you all. Mr. Wood, if you can do the next resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the city, when the mayor reads, read that proclamation, that shows how the city reacts in its most darkest days, and this is no exception. The pandemic hit us all very hard. It still is out there. It seems like there's light at the end of the tunnel, and people are vaccinated, but this is due in large part to the efforts of quite a number of people. And I'd like to read this resolution that is presented by the entire council and signed by the entire council. Whereas, the COVID-19 pandemic threatened the health and well-being of the Virginia Beach community, and whereas, the City of Virginia Beach had a longstanding partnership with the Virginia Department of Health, including experienced operating community vaccination events, and whereas, the City of Virginia Beach has significant resources available to support mass community vaccinations, including experienced incident leaders, planners, support personnel, and facilities, and whereas, City of Virginia Beach leadership chose to provide an unprecedented level of support for mass COVID-19 vaccinations by committing staff, facilities, and a $1.5 million funding reserve to create the Vaccinate Virginia Beach operation. And whereas, a joint management team from the City of Virginia Beach and Virginia Department of Health was assembled to support leadership planning, logistics, and operations for Vaccinate Virginia Beach, and whereas, the City and Department of Public Health started vaccinating key personnel within 10 days of federal approval of the vaccine, and whereas, the first drive-through community vaccination site in Hampton Roads was opened at EMS Station Number Eight on December 29, 2020, to vaccinate local healthcare workers, and that's in the Lynn Haven District. Had to throw that in there. And whereas, a high-volume vaccination center was opened at the Virginia Beach Convention Center on January 12, 2021, with a goal of providing 750 shots per day, the operation ultimately attained a peak output of 3,000 shots per day. And whereas, the City of Virginia Beach also collaborated with faith-based community leaders to reach disconnected and underserved populations, supporting 15 smaller vaccination events, and whereas, over 2,000 staff and volunteers from across the city organization worked at community vaccination centers. Let me repeat that, 2,000 volunteers and staff. Numerous city, state, and federal agencies provided personnel and material support to Vaccinate Virginia Beach, and whereas, the Vaccinate Virginia Beach team administered nearly 125,000 shots from December 28, 2020 through April 30, 2021. And again, I'll repeat that number, 125,000 shots. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council hereby recognizes all those who serve their community as part of Vaccinate Virginia Beach. And I think we need to give everybody a round of applause for that. And Chief Brazel, you don't have all 2,000 people. Are they out in the hallway, or?
No, sir. Thank you for those kind words, and Danielle and I are just representing the tip of the iceberg here of, from Health, Fire, CERT, and many, many other agencies that participated to make this a reality, and we are continuing to be out there assisting the department to give shots, but we're very proud and appreciate the support that let us make it happen.
Thank you. Danielle?
Yep, I just want to say, it's a true team effort. There's a term that FEMA always uses, whole community, and this effort really embodied whole community. So thank you all for your support along the way, and thank you all to our staff. We really could not have done it without you. Thanks.
And let me just say, you know, as a city that's been through tragedy and challenges over the past years, you know, we as a community, I have said it often, and I will continue to say, that the strength of Virginia Beach are the people of Virginia Beach, the people that live here, work here, play here, do businesses. But I'll tell you, what is heartwarming for all of us on this die is to see as we go about the entire city, the good acts of goodwill that people are practicing, the sense of spirit, and that showed a tremendous amount of resolve and tenacity that helped us really get through a very tough time, especially with the COVID. So once again, you know, beyond expressions of appreciation are not enough, because you know something, you're going to keep on doing it, and that's what makes our city great. Thank you all, and God bless you. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could be so kind to read some of the ground rules here.
Thank you, Mayor. Today we have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. To minimize risk due to COVID-19 pandemic, limited seating will be available in Suite Five, with overflow seating available in Suite Four, where the meeting will be broadcast via WebEx. In-person speakers will be required to follow physical distancing and safety protocols, including wearing a mask while in the convention center. For ordinances and resolutions, I will recognize in-person speakers first, in the order which they registered. After all in-person speakers have been called, I will then recognize the speakers participating via WebEx. For planning items, I will recognize the applicant or the representative first, whether they are in person or participating via WebEx. All those speakers will be recognized as previously stated. Speakers participating via WebEx, please mute any additional devices you have in the room to avoid any unnecessary background noise and/or the possibility of echoing. It is important that, once recognized, please wait two to three seconds to begin your comments to ensure council hears your complete remarks. Please begin by identifying yourself, and please do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as only one feet is open at a time to minimize the echo, and as such, you will be unable to hear a response. Again, speakers will be recognized in the order which they registered. Please note, if the speaker does not respond or a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, I will move on to the next registered speaker. Mayor, members of council, are there any questions about the process? Thank you, and I'll now turn the meeting over to Mayor Dyer to read the speaker rules, and then begin moving through the published agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to remind everyone that the City Council's speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have signed, they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, would you like to open the public hearings?
Okay, first of all, we're going to do the public hearings. First of all, do we have anybody on the Declaration and Dedication of the Easement of 15 Feet Wide easement to the Dominion Energy at Loretta Lane?
Yes, Barbara Messner. And Mayor, Ms. Messner has signed up on all three public hearings, and she's the first speaker for all three of them, so we'll just have her stay at the lecture until.
Okay.
For each, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Messner.
Interesting that Mr. Moss isn't here, because this is Dominion. Dominion is a major monopoly, and, you know, these easements, dedicating these easements. You know, I just got my bill, I just opened it, and they, everybody tells you to wear a mask. Dominion Energy, I mean, it's insane, the amount of money spent on these masks, but, yeah, there's, you know, I'm in opposition, and also, you know, the resolutions, you have resolutions down here where we can speak, and resolution up here where we can't, but I'm going to use my time, because, you know, I would like a resolution for George Mintz, who I miss, you know, he was amazing civil rights, human rights person, and when you did the, you know, dedication, you didn't have the pictures. This is the first time I forgot the pictures of the victim families. You didn't put pictures up there, you put pictures of everybody but them. This letter, this is a certified copy from Ms. Langer.
Yep.
Wait, I'm going to finish, you know, we've gone over this with Mark Stiles, it's my three minutes. She has sent you, over the years, cease and desist using her name.
Okay, Ms. Messner, we do respect, as we establish.
All right, that's all I'm saying.
Please just stick to the item.
Her certified copies, that's all, to Mr. Dyer.
Okay. Okay, the next public hearing is on sale of excess property, 15.07 plus or minus acre easement to the United States at Red Wing Lake Golf Course.
Right, I've been in opposition of you selling excess property over and over. It's our property, and every time it's excess property, someone's building something, somebody's expanding, and this is over there where Venture and KOA have their deal, and this is part of the golf course. You know, the golf courses used to be affordable and really nice, though I have no problem if it's just the golf course, but I do have a problem with the selective sale of excess property. We're not included in that, okay? And three, item three?
Oh, that's polling place change, Lynn Haven Precinct to John B. Die Elementary School.
Right. And, you know, we have enough problems with the elections, and even though you say it's, you know, it's our, it's just a formality, you shouldn't be changing polling stations. This is, actually, this is Mr. Woods and a little bit of Mr. Jones, you know, you hug everybody else, you hug all these people, you barely even speak to me unless I speak to you. Yeah, our elections are really important. I oppose, you know, changing them, because a lot of people, we have military that are out of town, this is the Lynn Haven Precinct to John B. Die. John B. Die is a very small school. Right next door is the Great Neck Middle, Taj Mahal that you build, and we need more places to vote. It could be on weekends, there's a lot of things that we can do with our elections, and, you know, Kaufman and Canoles, you know, one of Attorney Marks is on the oversight. We have no oversight of anything, that's why I come here. There's no oversight. The media doesn't cover this because they're partners in almost everything you do, so I'm opposed, and.
Okay, moving on to ordinances?
No, sir, we have additional speakers on the last public hearing.
Oh, okay.
The next speaker is Mr. Andrew Jackson, and after Mr. Jackson, we'll have a One WebEx speaker, Latasha Holloway.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon, or good evening. As you know, we just had a ruling on voting with federal court, so there's some concern when there's no large discussion and you start moving polling places. I'm just concerned that no lines change with it, and who's affected by that. So I expect some explanation to come from this council in terms of those items. What is legal, what is not legal, and is this change made without total community input by law? So I will ask that question, I will expect some sort of answer coming forth in terms of understanding why this move was made and who's going to be affected. Thank you.
The next speaker is via WebEx, Latasha Holloway. Ms. Holloway, if you would just pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
Yes, I'm so happy to be here this evening. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Andrew Jackson and Ms. Messner. This city owes you a debt of gratitude for holding this city accountable. It appears to me that the changing of this voting precinct, so close to an election, would interfere in and hinder the participation in the electoral process. So I want to know, what grounds do you have to burden the residents of this precinct? It's evident that changing the precinct would disturb and offend the Voting Rights Act, so, you know, this could impact the election's outcomes, and I just want to understand what you all are thinking, but I think we all know, Jim Crow is alive and well in this city. It is my mission to expose the continued discriminatory practices of this city council. At this point, I would like a response from this council. Has the city gotten permission to disturb or change this precinct as required in the Voting Rights Act? What grounds, again, do you have to burden the residents in the city precinct? And I would like, once again, a response from council to answer these questions.
Speaker, sir.
We will be having some public discussions coming forward on, you know, the changes with the voting. They will be forthcoming over the next couple of weeks, okay? Okay, at this point, can we move forward with ordinances and resolutions?
So Mayor, we have one person, Ms. Messner has signed up on all items, so we can begin with her. The only items that are being pulled from the consent agenda at this point are under Orders and Resolutions One and Two.
Okay.
So you'll begin with Ordnance and Resolutions Three and Four, and then the mayor will open a public hearing for planning, and you can go through your comments for each planning item.
Okay, so we'll come back on One and Two.
Yep, okay, so item number three.
Right. And I use my time to remind you all about due process. You know, I get by, I know enough about what goes on without reading the 480 pages, you know, it's pretty black and white what you're doing, but, you know, this comes out just two days before. People used to be able to go in the libraries, their libraries have been closed. None of y'all have town halls, none of you, somebody sent me that Ms. Wooton, you know, did something on Facebook. It's like, every one of you has my email, every one of you, but you don't reply, and I meant to bring Mr. Berluci's letter, which he didn't respond to because he was so offended. I'll bring it and put it on the record next time, because, okay, so. Create Urban Agricultural Advisory Committee.
No, ma'am, that is.
Number Three.
Number Three is where you begin.
Oh, Three, okay. Ordnance to appropriate 550,000 of fund balance from Waste Management Enterprise Fund to meet payroll obligations. You've been using mass shooting, it's not love for Virginia Beach, it's love for the victim families. It's not VB Strong, it's VB Wrong. You have exploited everything, and you've used all this money to pay COVID and the mass shooting for billboard signage, advertising on TV, and for salaries. If you had a proper budget and you took care of their employees, you wouldn't be doing this. So I'm opposed to you moving money around, that you should balance the budget without Okay? Number Four. Amend the scope of the Capital Project, 1,00581, Crime Prevention. Been speaking on crime prevention in the city since 91, when Bobby Matheson was police benevolent, in charge of police benevolent. Crime prevention through environment design and transfer 500,000 to CIP, Capital Improvement, same thing, establish a police satellite office in the resort area. We had a police precinct there. The police come from every other district. In the 90s, there was a lot of problems with the police, a lot have left the area, because they don't want to be pulled from Kempsville, and Ms. Wooton's worried about Centerville, they're pulled to come to the oceanfront, because it's been 100 officers short. You know, I've supported our police, our firemen, and EMS, but they only do what they're told to do and what they're directed to do. And to hire people and give them the same pay grade, that's obscene. I mean, they spoke in 2018, and they pleaded and begged with y'all, but you have to wait until, you know, I don't know. But deliberate, you know, we have, crime is deliberate blight, and all these businesses are going belly up. You can't just take care of the oceanfront. You cannot just take care of the special interests that support your campaigns, almost all of you.
Okay, open a hearing on planning.
Ms. Messner, all of the planning items, John consent.
So, what is that?
You speak on all of them at this time.
Okay. Okay. Um. You know, these meetings go through planning first, and it's at 9:00 AM, and then again at 12:00 PM. And, you know, for the past year, it's been impossible. People, you know, they're restricted. And for y'all to think about moving back into the city council chambers when we don't have enough room here, you know, this is more convenient. There's a lot more parking. People show up here, it's a lot easier. Okay, so variance, section 4.4 of the subdivision regulations, create two lots with one lot not meeting the agricultural district allowance density. You know, this started at the north end. You know, all these huge buildings, you take away all the trees, everything is cement, and then they pave their driveways. There's no parking. We have uncontrolled growth. None of this stuff should even be on the agenda until the pandemic, which you've been milking for a year, is over. Okay. So, you know, this is Ms. Henley. She said she was, I think she's spoken on this issue, these issues before. But density requirements. So, like I said, I'm opposed to anything going on right now. Okay, and two, Festival LLC, special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, which y'all created in 2012. And you amend over and over and over, over and over. You amend for who you want, when you want, and it's disgusting. Okay. Outdoor dining, when the pandemic is lifted, are you going to give us back the parking lots? Are you going to give us back the beach access? Or is watermen's going to, you know, keep what they have? You know, the shack, everything, all over the city. We don't have sidewalks. You know, I wish the new police chief would come because you want to have all this crazy stuff on the boardwalk, bike paths. There's no room. And the festival, everybody, you shouldn't be giving out, the school board in the city, something in the water mask. Everybody thinks that the promoter paid for it. He didn't. We paid over a million dollars, 350,000 from the schools. So it's not your job to entertain and fill hotel rooms. If you cared about, you know, giving the kids and adults something to do, you'd be doing it in the neighborhoods where they have nothing to do. Okay. Crowe Investment Group LLC, modification of proffers, additional option of exterior building material, Taylor Farms Road, Rose Hall. You know, Mr. Berlucci, you know, you did your grandstanding before, but you never answer emails. And you're insulted that I dare send you one calling you out for grandstanding for 12 minutes. We have three minutes on each item. Y'all should not have 12 minutes, and then each person take turns. Okay, number four. CRP, GREP, Overture Chesapeake Owners LLC, modifications of conditions, freestanding monument sign, Ocean Shore Avenue. Is that anywhere near the Floiopia, where they have the parties? And y'all decided that, you know, even though there were all those horrible problems and trash and drunk people and, you know, the woman who might have lost custody because she wasn't even watching her children, you want to have it again? Anything to sell alcohol. You've got the new ABC store on Holly and Laskin Road, 13,000 square feet. 13,000 square feet. It's mixed use. That means you probably put in another brewery and apartments. HUD money. HUD money was used for Bruce Thompson's 31st Street project. Okay, five. North Landing Beach RV Resort and Cotages, Virginia Beach LLC, modify conditions, non-commercial marina. And I hope Ms. Henley will discuss that. That's her district. Six, City of Virginia Beach, change of zoning from R5D residential duplex district to R75 residential district, re-subdivide and incorporate into existing lots of adjacent property owners. And this is a beach district. You know, the beach district is a nightmare. The overlays aren't doing anything except protecting the people who live there. You know, the parking meters are going back further and further. I just stopped at WRV because I saw all these brand-new, black parking meters. They aren't the fancy ones where it takes your license plate and you give a credit card, but it's three-hour limits. That's WRV's property. And they should not, the people going to the surf camps and everything, the skate camps, they should not have to pay to park. None of us should have to pay to park in the city. All the businesses should have, you know, park-and-ride shuttles, but you've taken all the land. You decide what goes on air land. How dare you? How dare you decide how to develop air city? And none of you have town halls, except Ms. Henley. But five o'clock, all the way out there for a couple hours, does not work for the entire city. And, you know. Okay. Let's see, what's the next number? Seven. This is for Samaritan House, Catholic Diocese of Richmond, and conditional use permit for a group home. Samaritan House has been around for a long time. And the Hur Shelter, they're both very good. But there's another one, Seaton Youth Shelter. You know, they have all these fundraisers. Where is that money? Just like Vanguard Landing, 2.9 million in 2014. I just looked at who voted. I wrote it all down, but you know who you are that voted for that. 2.9 million dollar loan that they defaulted on, they never built anything. They just had fundraisers there. So what you do and how you do it is why I'm upset and why I resent coming here and having hardly anybody, you know, show up and pay attention to what's going on in their city. Yeah, we need to prevent violence. Having alcohol delivered and having no curfews for the past year when everyone's, you know, stressed. You know, there's a lot of domestic violence that could be addressed if people had affordable things to do and places to go and parking to get there, and the rec centers and everything were open. So I'm not opposed to it. I'm just opposed to how you run the city and the fact that there's needs for this because you aren't taking care of protecting people. I've been here when people come up and say how they were treated at the homeless shelter, and you ignore them. You know, and then you pay to put them in hotels at the oceanfront. Like I said, the exploitation of these pandemics, mass shooting, preventable mass shooting, in my opinion, you had, you had all these mock, mock mass shootings a month ahead on the beach. Why didn't the police know how to get in that building? Why didn't everyone in the city have a card to get in that building that's public safety?
Ms. Messner, if you can kindly stick to the topic.
Okay. It is about battered women and a shelter for them. I think public safety does apply, Mr. Dyer. Okay, eight. Serza Enterprises, conditional use permit, motor vehicle sales and rentals. Yeah, all of these places, you know, they keep expanding into regular shopping centers close to homes. There's a problem with, you know, getting rid of all the oil and everything, not to mention the traffic. Uncontrolled growth. Uncontrolled growth equals big city crime. And that's what we have, big city crime. And I won't say the rest of it because crime isn't just on the streets. Okay. Another conditional, nine. Conditional use permit, motor vehicle sales and rentals, Newtown Road, Kempsville. Okay, but. And I won't even deal with Ms. Abbott. Okay, 10. Virginia Beach Winery, Siphon Development. I think he's like the largest developer in the city, and I was told, I'm not sure if it's true, that he just bought Breeden. And that, Breeden, what Breeden did to the, I don't know if it's true, but what they did to the Farm Fresh, it's obscene. You know, you subsidize, I'm glad you think it's funny, Mr. Wood. You subsidize Aldi's, Lidl's, 7-Elevens, Walmart, et cetera. You approve them to compete, and then, you know, Farm Fresh can't compete. They had other problems. But now we only have one grocery store? You know, for the resort area? And, you know, the pinnacle, Ms. Wilson's not here. You know, that's where her signs were. Like I said, the barrier he puts up, the money he spent on those barriers, and it closes the sidewalks. What are people supposed to do, even the tourists, your lovely tourists? How are they supposed to get anywhere when the sidewalks are closed for an entire, almost block, right there where the turnaround is, the roundabout? Okay. Conditional use permit, outdoor recreation facility. Yeah, some of these compete. You know, the city, you know, competes against these people, some of them. I don't know which this is, but the kids do need recreation, but the citizens shouldn't, we have rec centers that aren't even affordable. But people have to create recreation because the city doesn't provide recreation, except for the resort to fill hotel rooms? Okay. City of Virginia Beach, amend city zoning ordinance, sections 207 and 233, 232, distinguish between an administrative and standard review process and determine associated fees, fees for communication towers, small cell towers, and building mounted antennas. You know, some of these cell towers are from Brazil, you know, the ones for Cox and Verizon. If people will look at the contract, they're allowed to pass on those fees to the residents. We are taxed to death. It was a joke, the way y'all voted on the personal property tax in their budget. And speaking of the budget, the 2.9 million for Vanguard Landing? You know, that was 2013. I just looked, I told you, I looked up who voted. You know, where is the oversight from people we elect and the people that they appoint, like Lyndon Remias? I've said it on the record, maybe that's why it was finally audited. I don't know. But they use the money to have fundraisers and to rent a place, to keep doing fundraisers. So how you spend your money and how you design our city, I object to. And 13 is pretty much the same thing, except amend city zoning ordinance sections. I won't read them all. Jim Wood reads them for whatever legal reasons. There's 15. 15. Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code. Amend. Why did you have it if you're going to amend it? Why do we have laws if you're not going to enforce them? Why don't people, you know, run against you or recall you for malfeasance? I do not understand. Except that the media doesn't investigate, and you put out whatever you want. And, you know, all the things, you know, you made sure that it was certified, your love for Virginia Beach, not your love for the victim families, who are not satisfied. But this is a sample of, you know, a document that's not witnessed, you know, no date, nothing. And this was for compensation for the city attorney. This is a few years, well, I think 2019. And on public safety, this is July 4th weekend 2020. Virginia Beach Police scaling back foot patrols at the oceanfront. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, move for approval under the consent agenda under ordinances and resolutions. Item three, ordinance to appropriate $550,000 of fund balance in the Waste Management Enterprise Fund, rate meet payroll obligations. Item four, ordinance to amend the scope of Capital Project number 100581, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and transfer 500,000 to CIP 100581, rate establish a police satellite office in the resort area.
Okay, a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item J1, Martha White, Stephen K. Finger at L for variance to section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, rate create two lots with one lot not meeting the agricultural district allowable density at 6332 Pocahontas Club Road in the Prince Sand District. Item two, Festival LLC for a special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, rate outdoor dining and entertainment, outdoor recreation, commercial parking lot, open air market, recurring special events on site with various outbuilding structures and signs at 712 Atlantic Avenue in the Beach District. Item three, Crowe Investment Group LLC for a modification of proffers, rate additional option of exterior building material at 1529 Taylor Farms Road in the Rose Hall District. Item four, CRP-GRE, Overture Chesapeake Owner LLC, CFC LLC for modification of conditions, rate freestanding monument sign at 3399 Ocean Shore Avenue in Lynn Haven District. Item five, ordinance, North Landing Beach RV Resort and Cotages, Virginia Beach LLC for modification of conditions, rate non-commercial marina at 161 Prince Sand Road in the Prince Sand District. Item six, City of Virginia Beach for change of zoning from R5D residential duplex district to R7.5 residential district, rate subdivide and incorporate into existing lots of adjacent property owners at 206 Bob Lane in the Beach District. Item C, Robin Gauthier, CEO on behalf of Samaritan House Inc., Catholic Diocese of Richmond, Virginia, Episcopal Diocese of Southeastern Virginia for a conditional use permit, rate group home at 1593 Lynn Haven Parkway in the Centerville District, and that's consent for deferral for 30 days. Item eight, Serza Enterprises LLC for conditional use permit, rate in motor vehicle sales and rentals at 6056 Indian River Road in the Centerville District, noting that Mr. Towers abstaining on that item. Item nine, ANG Auto Sales, GNA Properties LLC for conditional use permit, rate motor vehicle sales and rentals at 604 Newtown Road in the Kempsville District. Item 10, the Virginia Beach Winery LLC, Siphon Development Company Incorporated for conditional use permit, rate Craft Winery at 1064 Lynn Haven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. Item 11, Derek and Nicole Howe for conditional use permit, rate outdoor recreation facility at 5409 Blackwater Road in the Prince Sand District. Item 12, City of Virginia Beach, ordinance to amend city zoning ordinance, sections 207 and 232, rate distinguish between an administrative and standard review process and determine associated fees for communication tower, small cell facilities, and building mounted antennas. Item 13, City of Virginia Beach, ordinance to amend city zoning ordinance, sections 301, 401, 501, 601, 701, 801, 901, 1001, 1501, 152, 11531, 2203, and the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code, section 5.2, 5.2. and the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code Section 5.2, 5.2.16, and 5.3.17. Ray communication tower, small cell facilities, building mounted antenna, and temporary tower. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If we can call the vote, please.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to zero, you have approved the consent agenda. It is read by Vice Mayor Wood, noting number seven is deferred to June 15th specifically for 30 days. And then Councilmember Tower abstaining on number eight.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move back to ordinances and resolutions. Number one, ordinance to amend city code 10-1 to change polling place, Ray Lynn Haven Precinct to John B. Di elementary school. Yes.
This is my district. If I can just make a comment on this real quick? Because there were some comments made. I think it's important to note that the reason this is being relocated is the church that where it was originally held has, has closed or moved or what have you, so it's no longer there. So they moved it to an elementary school because it meets all the ADA requirements and access requirements. This was done by the, recommended by the Electoral Board, which are three members appointed, one representing the Democratic Party, one from the Republican Party, and one from the party of the governor, whoever that happens to be. So I just wanted to, to put that out there initially that it's, it's at their recommendation. So you can call the speakers, but.
Okay, thank you.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner will be Andrew Jackson.
Hey, like I said, Jeffrey Marks. You know, there's a conflict. He should not be there. He should not be there. You know, we should, we should have a say in who has oversight on their elections. Not politicians and elected officials. And lawyers with conflicts, major, major conflicts. This, this happens all the time, every year, sometimes two and three polling stations. At one time, you wanted to move the main location, Building 14, to some property that ex-council member Disteth had to, to the, to an area where he owned land. I mean, you keep changing things. You know, we need to have control growth. And if there's a problem, it needs to be addressed before a date like this. You know, when do we find out? I think Mr. Jackson brought it up. You know, why aren't we notified in advance? Why isn't there a public hearing on things that affect all of us? We're the voters. Y'all are just one vote. Of course, in my opinion, you, you know, the fundraisers at the Cavalier Yacht and Country Club and other places, you know. You know, there, there's a way that the elections are won and that the money for advertising. But I think our, our election should be sacred. I don't think there should be mail-in votes. And like, you know, Sea-Tac, that's fine for, you know, a small area. But everybody wanted to go there for the early voting. There were, there were long lines in traffic. That's voter suppression. We have a lot of buildings in the city. There's, there's no reason that we should have problems with, with voting in America. Okay, there are other people, correct?
Thank you.
I, I ask Ms. White.
The next speaker is Andrew Jackson.
I won't keep you long. The same question I have, and, and I appreciate the explanation. But I'm not so much concerned with what building, building. I'm concerned with, is there any variation to who will be? Will, will there be any movement? Will be, not redrawing of lines such, but if I live over here, do I still go further down the vote? Or is that going to, going to create some sort of issue for folks that, that live in the different areas? I'm, I'm just concerned that we don't change who votes at what precincts or make it hard or difficult for someone now that it's moved. And, and that's really the explanation. I, I think there, before we even put something like changing the ordinance on there, I think there should have been a discussion with that and so that everybody's clear of exactly what you're doing.
Yeah, I, I think it's, they, just the precinct voting place moves. Everybody's in the same precinct.
You think?
I mean, that, that, it's happened to me where I vote a couple of times where they move from an elementary school to a church in different places. So I imagine it's the same process. Is that not the case, Mr. Stiles?
Yes, sir, the voting precinct is the same. The polling place just got moved because the existing polling place could no longer accommodate it.
Okay, so there's, there's no movement such that it would make it difficult for anyone that already votes there to now have a, a different opposition or a different challenge? That's, that's what I'm sure, before you vote on this.
Yeah, so it says in here that they made, you talk about accessibility. It meets ADA and that sort of thing. And then also the accessibility on bus routes and all that. So it, you know, and that, this, this was vetted by the Electoral Board, and that's why we have to have the public hearing before we vote on it, which is the hearing we just had.
Small public hearing. Okay. I, I'll check on it anyway, you know that.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Okay, do we have a second? Any discussion? Okay, we're open for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to zero, approve the ordinance.
All right, and the last item for the evening on ordinances and resolutions. Resolution to create an urban agriculture advisory committee requested by councilmembers Abbott and Berluci.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner will be Cheryl Robert Stevens.
You know, we don't need any more committees, commissions. The Agricultural Reserve Program, I don't know how many people know that Barry Knights and the Millionaires Club because of the Agricultural Reserve Program. But on the voting, I think Mr. Stiles should have let people know that with all the pandemic and the changes, people came from the north end to Sea-Tac to vote. I tried to go there. You know, there were long lines. This is not normal elections. And changing the polling stations when all the pandemic things haven't been lifted, you know, is an issue. And that's why what Mr. Jackson said about letting us in on the discussion, and you just voted. And you didn't fully answer his questions. Okay. Yeah, like I said, I'm opposed to this. You know, everybody gets their turn to, you know, put up something. You don't put up something that we want. You put up something that you want for a reason. Ms. Abbott, you, I don't, can, I wish you would disclose how many meetings you've missed. I don't care what the reasons are. You missed a meeting on. Arena. Okay, this, these are the people that brought it up, and I'm speaking about the people who are bringing this up and that I'm tired of more commissions. The RAC, you know, Resort Advisory Committee, which is the hotel industry, who come here and speak in droves when they want something, and they get it. So we don't need any more committees. We don't need Urban Agricultural Committee. We need for y'all to pay attention to what's going on in the city. We have flooding. We have uncontrolled growth. I would like to know how much, you know, a certain company made, you know, jumping on the flood bandwagon and using our, our rec centers, you know, for their, for their own company. I mean, and then, you know, where are all those people now? They don't come speak. Where, where are all these T groups? Where are they? So I'm in opposition. And, you know, y'all appoint each other. You appoint each other, you're liaisons. You're liaisons to us. You're supposed to. And Mr. Tower. Never, never one reply to email in your beach district. So, thank you.
The next speaker is Cheryl Robert Stevens. And after Ms. Robert Stevens is Bailey Manona.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Cheryl Robert Stevens, and I do live in the Kempsville District. Thank you to Councilwoman Abbott and Councilman Berluci for bringing this to the council. And no disrespect to Ms. Messner. This is an item that has come about through community involvement. And so I want to speak to you as to the pros and the cons. Yes, I am for it, but I don't feel that we're ever going to get this to be an approved item in our city unless we can show how we can handle the possible negatives. I do have some photos of some of the ways to control some of the negative items that I can provide to you as well. And so with the Urban Agricultural Advisory Board, it is very controversial. It is something where people in neighborhoods are either for it or against it. They have fears about what it will do to their property values, what it will do to their community, and what the side effects will be. I'm going to show you how we can put those fears to rest. So the negative issues. Really, when you look at the negative issues, I'm a new homeowner in the Kempsville area. I've lived in the area for a lot of years, graduated from Kempsville High School. I call it home even when I didn't live here. You know, as a property owner, I'm concerned. Is what my neighbor does in their yard going to affect my property values? Absolutely. If their yards and they have buildings and they have animals and things are not maintained, it can affect those areas around it. And that's why I did bring some images. I apologize, they're not on larger pieces of paper. I do have multiple copies I can provide you. Chicken Coops, it's not our farms from back in the 70s. It's not just an ugly building with mess everywhere. They are very much an item that you can provide in your space that matches your home style, that matches the style of your neighborhood, that could meet the requirements of homeowners associations if done properly. So that's really the big issue that most people have when they think of someone having chickens in their backyard. They think you're going to put up some fence, put some wire there and allow these animals to run wild. And that's not what we're proposing. So with that, you have people who are pretty handy and are going to be able to build their own. However, our local stores, Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, big box stores, actually sell chicken coops. You can get your more local places, such as your Taylor's Do-It Centers, your Ace Hardware, your Tractor Supply, Farm Bureau, all of those places, if they don't provide them, can point you in the right direction to do this in a way that would be proper for the neighborhoods to allow this. All right, so noise. People think of chickens and they immediately think of roosters. And what the advisory board would look into is what kind of noise complaints have happened in outlying areas? Chesapeake allows their residents to have laying hens. I have family in Norfolk who have their six laying hens and have had them for several years now. And the advisory board would be able to.
Thank you very much.
Bring information on that.
Appreciate it.
All right, I did just want to say.
Thank you very much.
That I appreciate you having us, and I can provide these documents for you if you would like.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bailey Manona. And then after Ms. Manona will be Jacob Long.
Hello. Good evening. Okay, I wrote a big speech. I'll try to get through it fast. Thank you for having me. My name is Bailey Manona. And to get started on this discussion, I'd like to give a little background info on myself. I have a bachelor's in nutrition and a master's in sustainable food systems. I am the founder of a new grassroots and soon-to-be nonprofit called Tidewater Food Alliance, which is a regional-focused food policy council that brings together many different stakeholders across the food value chain to discuss and solve issues on food insecurity and to create a more resilient and regional community-based food system. I realize there are many concerns over allowing backyard chickens in residential areas, but having Urban Agriculture Advisory Board will be pivotal in creating a framework to discuss these issues. And a 2018 study published in the Journal of Community Health Scientists looked at urban poultry ordinances across 100 municipalities in Colorado. The study showed that a lack of regulations caused issues to protect both animal welfare and human health. The research helped to create a solid framework to reduce accidents, disease, and annoyances sometimes associated. The Urban Agriculture Advisory Board would put forth these provisions for, from research gathered to ensure backyard chickens and other urban agriculture endeavors that will ensure safety and long-term sustainability. In our current regional food system, urban agriculture is often an afterthought. In the city of Virginia Beach, agriculture has an economic impact of 134 million, but still, most of our crops are going towards creating fuel and other bio products, not necessarily food for human consumption. With our ongoing pandemic, we will continue to see supply chain issues, including food shortages at grocery stores, worker shortages, and food insecurity continuing to rise. Not only that, in the state of Virginia and echoing across the whole United States, farmers are nearing retirement age, but it's not as simple as one might think to transition the family farm over to family members. Currently, we are losing viable farmland at unprecedented rates. Those who want to go into farming cannot afford rising land prices and student loan debt. Those small producers who are farming food for human consumption cannot scale up compared to what we see transported to grocery store shelves for many reasons. Farmers' markets are not always accessible because of the times and days of the week. Larger chain grocery stores don't prefer purchasing local, local produce from local small farmers, since it's often cheaper for them to transport produce from across the country and often from larger corporate-owned farms. There are many other issues that I could speak to. But if we want to seriously address resilient, community-based food systems and make sure food security is a thought for generations to come, urban agriculture must be considered. Urban agriculture can help address backyard hens and commercial composting efforts. It can also help address new and beginning farmers start out on vacant lots. It can, it can help feed our community members and ensure food insecurity rates.
Thank you very much.
Or, except snap and wick. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jacob Long. And after Mr. Long will be Resti Restudio.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and members of city council. My name is Jacob Long. And first, I would like to thank Councilwoman Abbott and Councilman Berluci for bringing this issue forward tonight. I believe an Urban Agriculture Advisory Committee will be very helpful to make sure every voice in the city is heard relating to agriculture, specifically in the more urban areas where it's not been seen before. I have been interested in advocating for the legalization of backyard hens for quite some time, and I think this committee is a step in the right direction in that process. Taking a better look at the issues of urban agriculture through a committee will benefit everyone. Those in favor of a proposal will be able to voice their support, while those opposed will be able to share their reasons of opposition. This ensures everyone's opinion is taken into consideration and the issues are studied and discussed thoroughly. I urge all of you to vote for this, for the formation of this advisory committee, even if you are against some of the topics being proposed. By voting in favor of the committee, these topics will be examined so that council has a solid idea of what to do in the future. Thank for, thank you for your time, for your consideration, and I look forward to the successes this committee will bring in the future.
Thank you.
Resti Restudio. So Mayor, we do have someone via WebEx with the same last name. We'll go ahead and unmute Mr. Restudio. If you would like to begin, thank you.
Are you muting me or are you accepting me?
Begin your comments.
My name is Resti Restudio, and I don't have a political or a speech to present but the facts. I am a veteran of 20 years of service, suffering from PTSD. And the best and only most efficient therapist that I have is my rooster. I call him a guapo. He protects my hens. He protects me. And forgive me if I get emotional, but when I think about losing my best service animal, I, I cannot understand why. We can allow the noise of Harvey Davison's, howling dogs, barking dogs in the middle of the night, but I cannot be allowed my rooster, my hens, in my backyard that do not go into anybody's yard. They just are here to provide me with the sanity that I need after serving my country for 20-some-year years, putting myself in a harsh way for this country. So we can do today what we're doing today. Try to protect one another. Try to serve one another in a city that I'm very proud to live in. So yes, I do approve and support to have chickens in your backyard. They, they control the pests. in your backyard. They control the pests in my backyard. They control my insanity, my depression, my anxiety, all of that. You can probably hear, I got a little chick in my hand that she plays with me like a pet, like a little dog. They are my comfort animal, my comfort pets, and I could not see myself going, living another day without them in my backyard. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker via WebEx, the remainder speaker will be via WebEx, Faith Williams Shisvinter, and then the next speaker would be Conrad Shisvinter. Ms. Williams Shisvinter, if you'd pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
In 1995, when the city council passed the agricultural reserve program, they knew that agriculture was important to Virginia Beach. They took action to protect its viability. Many years later, the Virginia Beach Sustainability Plan was created and is quoted as saying, "We need to ensure that as a city, we can support a growing population and desired uses of land within the confines of our finite land area." The data and quotation pulled directly from plans that city council members worked to develop suggest action is urgently needed today to preserve the needs, values, and goals of our city. Additionally, the COVID-19 pandemic has exposed the instability of our food supply chain. With concerns around increased pressure on our local food supply, Virginia Beach residents seeking self-sufficiency and a rich local heritage in agriculture needing protection, the answer is clear and the potential is great. Voting yes to the Urban Agricultural Advisory Board would send Virginia Beach residents the message that we are heard and we matter. We know that chickens support the work of gardeners by eating pests, providing fertilizer, companionship, and fresh eggs. We know that they can be therapeutic for people suffering with PTSD and other conditions and can teach life skills to children and adults with special needs. We know that they require relatively minimal care, making them a great pet choice for many. Vote yes to explore what we haven't yet learned. If no action is taken tonight, Virginia Beach citizens will be forced to reckon with the reality that council members refuse to even grant permission to study an issue that means so much to so many. Some have already considered moving. I spent time looking for properties in Virginia Beach that are zoned agricultural, but find the homes are mostly not available or aren't realistic for my family. So as much as I love the city that raised me, I might soon leave too. I'm here before you in the hopes that I won't have to. Backyard hens, a composting program, and an overall commitment to urban agriculture in this city would address the urgency and importance of sustainability and would honor the agricultural roots of this land. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Conrad Shisvinter, and then after Ms. Shisvinter will be Joel Plant. Ms. Shisvinter, pause two to three seconds.
I'd like to take a second to embrace the line from the bookmark section, "The city's zoning ordinance promotes and protects the health, safety, and general welfare of the people of the city." General welfare. Okay, I digress. But I also want to embrace this Urban Agriculture Advisory Commission. Down the line, I hope the city liberalizes miniature pigs, backyard hens, and creates a composting program among other cool ideas. These ideas are organic creations of the city community. I'm a member of the Virginia Beach Democratic Committee, yes, but I'll give props to my conservative and libertarian peers in the area. As I know, they like to use the phrase "proper role of government." I would contend, like the bookmark alludes to, that the catering to the general welfare is a proper role of government, but over-regulating the lives of people isn't, especially in fronts that don't harm neighbors like food trucks and owning hens in your backyards. Having ordinances to forbid these things creates a criminality that need not be, and I encourage a body like a UAAC to exist to root these things out and suggest fixing them. And I, as a member of Virginia Beach's Talent Bank and I'm curious about creating a UAAC, suggest myself, among many others, to be on that board like other boards that are great too, like Civilian Review Board Task Forces and Parks and Recreation and others. Remember, you're all welcome on the Beach Brothers Show to discuss Virginia Beach's politics, and props to Councilman Berluci and Councilwoman Abbott for suggesting this UAAC. Vote wisely, please. Thank you.
Conrad.
The last speaker is Joel Plant. Joel Plant, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning, thank you.
My name is Joel Plant. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I am a husband, a father, and a disabled combat veteran. I'm here to speak to you today in support of the Urban Agriculture Advisory Committee. The current pandemic has opened my eyes more than I could have imagined. I have been fortunate enough to have a job and work from home. I have been fortunate enough to witness my two-year-old daughter grow into her in three. I have been fortunate enough to go to the store and find the shelves are empty and staple foods gone. Fortunate enough to note the eggs, bread, and milk that we have are best left for my child, not for me. This has happened again with the Colonial Pipeline. How does one get to the store to provide? It is well known that we do not eat eggs alone, but we all know that eggs provide a greatly beneficial source of food. Concerns such as these place a growing issue into view, food security. It is of my belief that backyard hens and urban agricultural initiatives such as composting enrich the lives of citizens whom choose to use them. It is also my belief that neighbors who choose to disagree with such practices be allowed to have an ordinance in which they can reference to support their quality of life. There are areas of contention that focus on subjects such as fungi, parasites, smell, water runoff, and noise. If these are subjects in which you share concern, then please vote yes to the advisory board. Allow your citizens the ability to gather, discuss current issues, present vetted data and information surrounding science and facts in order to generate something good for the entire community. Through voting yes, you will enable, you will enable another source of sustainable food. You will enable future generations the ability to learn law skills. You will enable those who wish to be protected. You will enable those who wish to live a dream. You will enable your citizens the ability to be a step closer to free you can enable, and you can make an impact. Before I finish, I would like to quote our mayor, Robert Bobby Dyer. You have said that agriculture is integral, excuse me, agriculture is integral to the DNA of Virginia Beach. Mayor Dyer and Virginia Beach City Council, as a disabled veteran, I hope that you will consider people like me when you place your vote for the Urban Agriculture Advisory Committee. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mayor, that's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Ms. Abbott and Mr. Berluci.
Thank you. Well, I'd first like to thank all the speakers tonight. I don't think I could have said anything that you all said any better. It was really great to hear everyone's personal insights, and I really appreciate you taking the time. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to create an Urban Agriculture Advisory Committee, and I yield to Councilman Berluci if he has anything to add.
I would just simply like to second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly respect everyone's comments on this issue, and it's no surprise to Ms. Abbott that I'm opposed to this, and I also shared that with Mr. Berluci. I'm opposed to allowing livestock or barnyard animals in residential areas, and there's nothing any task force or committee is going to do that's going to convince me otherwise. Frankly, I'd remind this council that the citizens on the Animal Control Advisory Committee and the Virginia Beach SPCA both took positions against this several years ago. I could spend time expanding on the very real threat posed by diseases such as salmonella, toxoplasmosis, avian flu, E. coli, and a myriad of others that are shown on the CDC website about backyard hens. Could talk about predators such as foxes, coyotes, snakes, and rats that are attracted to this. But the real issue remains, and this is not a surprise to Ms. Abbott, I know, is the issue with dogs. And, you know, dogs are threatened not by chickens but by humans who raise chickens, and I have to pull this up on here to make sure everybody's clear about that. And I've got a copy of the state code I'll pass out to the members of council in a minute. State Code 3.2-6552 is very clear on these threats. If your family dog, your dachshund, your lab, your beagle, chases or injures your neighbor's chickens, the law requires, requires, and this says shall, it's not may, that the dog either be killed or seized. There is no other option. The law allows your neighbor to kill your dog. It allows that. If your dog is only seized and not killed, the law requires that you be charged criminally. If you're convicted, the law requires only one of several outcomes, three outcomes. A, the dog is immediately killed or euthanized. B, the dog must be moved to a state that doesn't border Virginia. And by the way, if the dog returns back to Virginia, it must be immediately killed. And that's, this is all shall, this is not may, and this is an important, important part of this. Or, the dog can be transferred to another owner, be microchipped, and taken from you, or you could keep it if the judge allows it. However, you would be required to keep it penned indoors and out, and it must be muzzled and leashed when it's off your property. There's no latitude offered to the police or judges on this, and I think that's, that's an important thing. The code uses the term shall repeatedly. If your dog does what dogs normally do, running after chickens or injuring them, the best you can hope for is that you're going to be allowed to keep them penned up and muzzled and leashed for the rest of its life. Circumstances obviously can be much worse. I mean, again, your neighbor has the permission to kill your dog if it's on his property and injures his chickens. I'd point out, and when I pass this out, you'll see at the bottom of this code section, this is not an archaic law. It was updated in 2008, 2014, and 2016 at the request of urban agricultural advocates, and they took out one section, which now it doesn't immediately require the death of the dog. It allows animal control to seize the dog and then subsequently take you to court where the judge can, has the option of those three items. You know, having said all that, people say, well, you know, that's not going to happen. But you, I think one thing I found on council, if something can happen, a lot of times it does happen in Virginia Beach, and that's just, we're a big city. We have a lot, a lot of people here. You know, dogs on farms are properly socialized to interact with barnyard animals. Dogs in Kings Grant are Great Neck or Thalia or Windsor Woods or not. So I just, I can't support this. I certainly understand it. I would also say, just like I've said before, these folks are the most polite activists that we've ever had before us, and they continue to be so. And, you know, I certainly sympathize with, with your plight, but this is not something that I will ever support.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Tower.
I appreciate Mr. Wood's comments, but I just don't want to have the debate tonight. I'm not prepared for it. I don't think anybody else is. I respect his opinion. And Mr. Long made, the young man that made the impression on me, he said, let's, let's give a chance for it to be fully aired, and I'm willing to do that, and I will vote to support it for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Ms. Henley.
Well, could I just ask, are we being asked to appoint a standing committee that is going to be around forever, or are we appointing a study committee that is going to look at the issue and bring it to us as to whether or not this is something we would adopt?
Ms. Abbott.
I can answer that, yes. So it's my hope that this be a standing committee that can evaluate a number of issues. If you look at the ordinance, it not only addresses backyard hens, but we've had residents with concerns about the mini pig issue, and I've also been reached out to by a number of residents about a city composting issue. So my hope is that this be an advisory board for issues that are traditionally agricultural, or issues that are traditionally handled in more rural areas that maybe have some desire to be implemented more citywide. So, and hopefully, if they were to suggest some kind of resolution specifically to backyard hens, that they could then be the sounding board for any tweaks that need to happen. If there are issues that arise from, you know, say like a pilot program or a test run of some sort, then that we would have a system in place to help evaluate and vet that issue, and any other issues that might be of interest.
But actually, if we don't adopt ordinances that allow people to do these things, they won't be able to be talking about those. I mean, don't, don't we have to change our ordinances in order to allow chickens and pigs and so forth?
This, this, or this advisory board would be making a recommendation for an ordinance. They wouldn't be, we, they're not going to, they're going to make a recommendation for a backyard hen ordinance or a mini pig ordinance.
All right. So, but, but in order to do the, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Are they a committee that is going to just, because I, okay, if each one of us is going to be appointing somebody to this committee, I mean, are we appointing someone who is neutral and is going to study the issue and decide whether it's something that we should do or not? Or are we going to be appointing somebody that's in favor of it? I mean, I would have to know before I would know who I was going to ask to serve, because, I mean, don't we have to first of all decide if this is something our, our neighborhoods are going to accept?
So it's my hope that we all try to appoint neutral parties that represent and the diversity of our community. The way I wanted it, and I think Councilman Berluci, although I'll let him speak for himself, is that the committee will consist of 11 members who reflect the geographical makeup of city council with one member from each council district and four members serving at large, and it should include persons with agricultural expertise along with residents of urban areas. And the committee shall study issues referred to it by the city council, the first being backyard hens, mini pigs, and the potential city composting program. So there is, there is a study board.
Yeah, if I could just, you know, make a point here along with Mrs. Henley, I think, you know, there's, you know, this is going to be a, you know, somewhat of a controversial issue. It's been, would it be better just to have an ad hoc committee to look at it first, you know, to make some recommendations, and then if things proceed accordingly, you know, and the justified need to, you know, go to a full-time committee then? Yeah, Mr. Berluci.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly didn't mean to interject and get in front of Councilmember Abbott on this, although I'll just share my perspective that I think answers your question. Based on my conversations and what we've heard tonight from the speakers and the conversations that I've had with members of the community, I think there's an interest in expanding opportunities for what's commonly referred to as urban agriculture. I think that could be substituted for suburban agriculture as well. And that includes things like composting. It includes things like vegetable gardening, other forms of sustainable gardening. Over the pandemic, I became interested in gardening myself, although most of it was based around native species plants. I know a lot of people created gardens in their backyards. It's more than, I don't have the numbers on that, but a lot of people establish gardens in their backyards, and they're interested in not only gardening but sustainable practices that relate to gardening. That include, of course, composting. And all of these things have impacts that go beyond nutrition and sustenance. They also relate to recreation, mental health, community connectedness, skill sharing, exercise. The list can go on and on and on about the benefits that are associated with what we call urban or suburban gardening that go beyond anything related to eggs or nutrition. It has to do with all of the above. And I think what the intent of Councilmember Abbott with establishing this committee would be to study and to create points of access and opportunity for our residents to understand more about all of those issues and to participate more fully in that process, and really optimize the benefits that can come with gardening and agriculture in urban or suburban environments in addition to agricultural environments. And so it's not a replacement for the Agriculture Advisory Committee. I think it's an enhancement and complement to it, and, and for all the reasons that I just stated, in addition to the ones that Councilmember Abbott stated, I think it's appropriate that we adopt the ordinance this evening.
But, Mr. Berluci, I guess, you know, it comes down to this. Do we need a committee in perpetuity for this, or could we at least start off with, you know, with something of, you know, ad hoc temporary and, you know, see where it takes us?
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I'll respond respectfully. I don't believe that an ad hoc would be appropriate. I think that many in the community, particularly the hens community, but I've heard this from other communities that have an interest in sustainability, they want to be taken seriously, and I think this is a showing of good faith.
Okay. Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
You can certainly appoint this committee, but I've got my, I don't know where it's going to go. I'll, I'll say yes, but people can do those things anyway, and we've got an agricultural department now that allows those kinds of things, and- department now that allows those kinds of things, and it's, the ability is there to do it. We've got all kinds of extension agents to do those things with people, so you don't really need a committee to do it.
Okay, that's a vote for either.
Was that, that yes, Ms. Henley?
Was that a yes vote?
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Well, clearly, the people who are supporting it or want to have backyard chickens, I think that's truly where, what we're doing here. I, I just don't believe we ought to have backyard chickens, so I'm going to say no.
Councilmember Rouse?
Um, aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
No.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye. And, you know, let me just-
By a vote of seven to two, you've approved the resolution.
You know, you know, speaking as a man who has three lively dachshunds, you know, once again, I do have some concerns, but a lot of things can be ironed out over time. I guess what it really comes down to is that we had a number of people that, you know, just expressed that they wanted a voice, and, you know, I think it's a point that we should at least listen. You know, what comes up eventually will be our final, will be our decision, but at least we afford people the opportunity, you know, to at least come forward, so, okay? You got it. Okay, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Mayor, make the following nominations. To the Arts and Humanities Commission, Brenda Roberts. To the Bayfront Advisory Commission, Wallace Damon. To the Bike Ways and Trails Committee, Walter Camp and Barbara Henley as the council member. To the Chesapeake Bay President, nope, we're not doing that one yet. To the Citizens Review Task Force, Veronica Coleman, Steve Cover, Michael Imprevento, Alfred Jacock, Susan Mayo, Sean Montero, Teresa Orr, Karen Pruden, William Rice, Yusef Tajada, Patricia West. To the Community Services Board, Michael Anderson and Cindy Curtis. To the Social Services Board, Robin Farmer Wheeler and Carrie Waits. To the Tidewater Community College Board, Delcino Miles.
Okay, can we call for the vote? Oh, yeah, Mr. Rouse.
Do I have to wait till we get to, well, you name all the committees? I'm voting no to the appointment of the Citizens Review Panel for reasons being I don't think it's reflective of the community in which it was intended to serve. I thank every council member, and I want to thank everyone who sent in their talent banks, who stepped forward, wanted the servants committee. This is some, this is know-how, know-ways-shape-perform reflection of the, the people per se. Just that overall makeup of this committee, I think it, if we're going to look for a credible outcome, it should be more reflective of the community in which it is for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Ms. Wood.
So I also want to thank everybody who, who filled out a talent bank and so diligently sent it in to be a part of the task force and, you know, looking at those who were appointed, what I would say is I'm concerned because there is a, a lot, there are a lot of candidates who have law enforcement background and legal, and a legal background. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but I'm saying that when you have the majority that has that on this particular task force without including, you know, other people with different backgrounds, regular, everyday citizens, young adults, others in the community who could also bring a lot of feedback and a different perspective, and that's what we're really looking for. We're looking for a different perspective, and I don't think we have that here. And the interest was to ensure in the process that there was transparency, that each candidate was vetted and put forth to be a part of the task force, and I didn't see that here. And so for that reason, I have to vote no on that portion of the appointment.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Ready for the vote?
Okay, go ahead, you know, with the vote with Mr. Rouse and Ms. Wooten objecting to the Citizen Review Panel.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? So I understand you're voting no on the Citizen Review Panel, but are you voting no on all the appointments altogether or just that one?
No, I approve all the other appointments. I just wanted to take my time.
I appreciate it, thank you. Councilmember Tower?
I'd like to vote no on the Citizen Review Panel and yes on the other appointments.
Councilmember Wooten?
No on the Citizens Review Panel Committee and yes to the other appointments.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to zero, noting Mr. Rouse, Mr. Tower, and Ms. Wooten's objection, nay votes for the CRP appointment. You have appointed those nominated by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, thank you. At this point, any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.